From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Today is June 18th, Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. Board to reconvene. The first item is rule call.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Next item is salute to the flag. It's going to be head this morning by Pastor Robin Robinson. And at the conclusion of that, we'd ask that you please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Pastor?
Good morning. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with a C, A, or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We can act on those all in one motion. The consent, we have 32 items on the morning session this morning. Items 1, 3, and 4 on page 2 are not on the consent calendar, and items 22 and 23 on page, excuse me, items 1, 3, and 4 on page 2, I think that's what I said, are not on the consent calendar. Items 2 and 3 on page 4 are not on the consent calendar. Everything else is on the consent calendar. 22 and 23. I thought that's what I said. Sorry, I stand corrected. 22 and 23 are not on the consent calendar. Everything else is. If there's anyone here that would like to ask for a separate consideration of those or make a comment on any of those other items, now would be the time to step forward and do that. So now I'll ask for the board for a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion consent.
Second.
You have motion and second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Takes us back to page 2, item 1. That is an item that proclaims June 2019 as Kern County Animal Services No Kill Effort Awareness Month, and it'll be, this item will be presented by Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here today. I have with me Nick Cullen, who, as you know, is our Director of Animal Services. In December of 2015, the Animal Services Department announced the goal of being a no-kill animal shelter by December of 2020. Programs such as spay neuter, foster, rescue, and adoptions are vital to increasing live outcomes. Additionally, community education and collaboration with other partners are critical to achieving this goal. In October of 2017, the department reached out to community animal rescue groups and established the No Kill Coalition, whose purpose was to make Kern a no-kill community. Coalition events have involved many community rescue groups as well as city jurisdictions, increasing the collaboration effort. In order to raise awareness of the challenges faced by homeless animals in Kern County, the department will be participating in related events. The department offers free DHPP vaccines to all who come to the Wednesday night and Saturday clinics without regard to the jurisdiction of the owner. So it is my honor and privilege on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to present this proclamation to our director. Come on up here, Nick. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern State of California has officially proclaimed June 2019 as Animal Services No Kill Efforts Awareness Month in Kern County. This recognition has been entered in our official minutes. Sidebar, Honorable Chairman David Couch. Nick, you have the floor. Thank you so much for all your efforts and everybody who works for you.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivner. Boy, that's a long name for a proclamation. My name is Nick Cullen. I'm the Director of Kern County Animal Services, Your Department for Animal Services, Chairman Couch, members of the board. I'd like to take just a few minutes to give us all just a quick, and I do mean quick, update on some of the progress we've made as a department towards that idea of no-kill. I'll preface it by saying also that Kern County Animal Services has not achieved that no-kill threshold as of yet. You know, you'll see going through this real quickly that we have achieved a 75% save rate, so 75% of all the animals that come to county shelters are now making it out alive as of 2018, but our goal is 90%. Also, over the years since, as Supervisor Scrivner said, since December 2015, our understanding of no-kill has kind of evolved. You know, we know it's one thing to find live outcomes for the animals that come to the county shelters, but it's another thing to create and foster a no-kill community. That is the heavy lifting that's involved in something like this. There's still animals that suffer on the streets, there's still animals that are neglected and abused, and until that's stamped out, I think it's a pretty broad term now, no-kill. You know, we want to be a no-kill community, not just a no-kill sheltering organization. That being said, just to go over a few things. Very, very few.
Maybe just one.
Okay, so it's just a quick PowerPoint to go over some of the progress we've made, good and bad. Thank you, Mr. Constantine. So as you'll see, when I approached the board in December of 2015, we were affecting 60% live outcomes, and like I said, a live outcome is literally an animal that comes to us alive and leaves alive. 60% of those animals that were coming to us in 2015 made it out alive. In 2018, we achieved 75%. As a reminder, the goal is 90% in the shelter. As I said, we're always going to be continuing to try and foster and create a no-kill community. So those statistics show what's happening in the shelter, not necessarily what's happening in the community, but we're trying to get a handle on that as well. We can go to the next slide. So that graph right there, what you're seeing is total euthanasia since 2014 of dogs and cats. We will typically focus on dogs and cats because that makes up about 95% of all the animals that come into the county shelters, and also about 98% of the euthanasia that happens in county shelters. So just a few things to take away from that slide right there, is you see the downward progression on both dog and cat euthanasia. It's a good thing, it's trending in the right direction. We've seen a 52% decline on euthanasia of dogs and cats from 2015 through 2018. We went from 6,554 dogs and cats that were killed in county shelters in 2015 to 3,144 in 2018. So we made some progress in both dogs and cats, which is a good thing to see. We can go to the next slide. Just to reiterate, those statistics are pretty impactful when you consider that at our high-water point in 2011, we were responsible for destroying almost 22,000 dogs and cats. So that number right there is, it's pretty, it's pretty heavy when you think about that. Next slide. So we broke it down, I went and broke it down to dogs and cats. You'll see dog euthanasia, specifically dog euthanasia, is trending in the right direction. Again, we're seeing that downward progression. We went from, in 2015, we euthanized 3,971 dogs, and in 2018, we euthanized 1,899. It's a 60% decline in dog euthanasia since 2014, 52% decline in euthanasia since 2015. Still 1,899 dogs being put down in county shelters is far too many, in my opinion, but we're working on that. Next slide. Just to reiterate again, those numbers, 3,971 dogs that were put down in 2015, 1,899 in 2018, we're seeing declines in overall shelter euthanasia, specifically dogs especially. We'll look at cats now. So your cat euthanasia, you'll see it's been consistently inconsistent. Up until 2017, the second bar from your right is 2017, and then the bar to the far right is 2018. That's the biggest drop we've seen to date in feline euthanasia. We went from 2,355 cats that were destroyed in 2017 to just under 1,250 cats that were euthanized in 2018. So the cats are trending in the right direction, but we still have some more work to do to find homes for cats as well. Decline of 45% in feline euthanasia between 2017 and 2018, as I said, is really no discernible trend prior to that. This is a pretty interesting slide, if you can make it out, but what we're seeing is an overall decline in total dog and cat intake since 2015, when I was up here. We've declined by 2,000, just over 2,000 total dogs and cats coming into the shelter, period. And a lot of times, in what we're trying to accomplish, less animals is the name of the game, so we're starting to see the fruits of that labor. We broke it down a little bit further. A lot of times in our industry, we not only want to see statistics, but we want to see where we're failing and why we're failing. The chart to your right shows all cat outcomes for 2017. Chart to your left shows all cat outcomes for 2018. 71% of all cats were live outcomes in 2017, and 81% of cats survived the shelter in 2018. What we're going to look at now is the most common reason why we're having to put down a cat. That chart right there shows, you probably can't read it, but all of the categories of why we would put a cat down in the shelter, the large, sort of purplish, lavender, whatever you want to call the color, all the way to the right, the big bar, that's 498 cats that were euthanized because they were too young. So there's nothing wrong with those animals. They weren't sick, they weren't injured, they weren't, you know, unsuitable for adoption. They were simply too young, so under eight weeks of age. So we know when we look at that, okay, that's where we need to make up some ground, is in the underage cats, under the age of eight weeks, and that's why we have a kitten nursery now on site. As I said, 40% of all cats euthanized in 2018, which is simply too young to survive on their own, and that's why we started a kitten nursery. We'll move to dogs here to try to find out why the county is still, why we are still destroying dogs in the county shelter. What that shows right there is all dog outcomes for 2018, why they're being put down. And what we can take away from that is that large breed dogs, this shows large breed dogs are dying at a higher rate than small breed dogs. So in 2018, for large breed dogs, we euthanized about 1,000 more large breed dogs than we did small breed dogs. You'll see that that number of dogs euthanized was slightly over 430, and like I said, for large breed dogs, it was well over 1,000 more than small breed dogs. So we know that some, two of the problems that we have so far that we're still trying to fix are underage kittens and large breed dogs. Almost 300 more adoptions and over 650 more rescues of small breed dogs than large breed dogs in 18. If a small breed dog comes into the shelter, they have about an 80% chance of leaving alive, as opposed to a 60% chance of leaving our shelters alive if they're large breed dogs. Like I said, over 1,000 more large breed dogs were euthanized in 18 than small breed dogs. So then we look at, okay, we know we're destroying large breed dogs, why is that? You know, somebody might say, well, large breed dogs tend to be a little bit more aggressive and maybe not and maybe not suitable for adoption. What we see here is evidence that that is not the case. So the chart to your left shows all reasons why any dog, large or small breed, was put down. On the center graph right there, that's all small breed dogs, and to your far right is all large breed dogs. The category that's highlighted in yellow says humane, not adoptable. That is a category that's created that is translated to mean space. So the most common reason we're putting down a large breed dog or a small breed dog is because we ran out of space and time. So it's not because they're aggressive, it's not because they're sick or injured, it's simply we just ran out of space and there's more animals coming in. So we know that we need to find solutions to the problems of large breed dogs that are in the shelter that we're having trouble finding placement for. 37% of all dog euthanasia outcomes were for space. 85% of dogs euthanized for that reason were large breed dogs. If it's, if a large breed, if a dog is being euthanized for space, 85% of the time, it's a large breed dog. Something that really impacted me is 20% overall of our total euthanasia in county shelters are simply large breed dogs that we couldn't find a home for. So what we see here is overall intake from all areas, all animals. The thing to take away from that is that there's a decline in overall intake from all intake types, as I said in an earlier slide, but the more interesting thing to take from this is that there's a category there that says KC, ACO. That's our animal control officers. Those are the numbers of dogs and cats that our officers are responding to in the field, picking up and taking into the shelter. You'll notice that we see a pretty marked decline in the amount of dogs and cats being brought in by officers from the field. Over 5,800 were brought in from officers in 2015, 4,645 were taken in by officers in 2018. So it's indicative of something, we're not really quite sure what, you know, it could be that there's less dogs in a community, it could be that there's more rescues and interested parties that are helping us in the field, sort of alleviating the need for us to respond. But either way, that's a good thing to see less animals being picked up by officers in the field. Other way. I think we're going backwards. There you go. Okay, so we've seen, we've seen an 11% overall decline in total animal intake since 2015, but ACO intakes have declined by 20%, which is awesome. What we see here, real quick, I'll go over this, this is, these are our field response calls. So as some of you may know, we have animal control officers. Animal control officers respond to people that call our dispatch system and say, there's a loose dog in my neighborhood. So there's five sort of charts there. The chart to the left is for an owner's loose call. Real quickly, that's for a person that calls us to say their neighbor's dog is loose. The chart to the right of that says SEO, that's stray confined. That is somebody that calls us and says, I found a stray dog and it's confined on my property. The center graph says stray non-confined, SNC, that's a dog. Somebody calls in and says, there's a loose dog in my neighborhood, but it's not confined on my property. The next one to the right is D, that's deceased dog, and then the far right is PT, which is patrol check. So what we can take from this is that all calls, all calls for officers to respond to loose animals in the field are declining pretty significantly. 34% for owners' dogs being loose, 34% decline in overall calls responded to for that. Stray dogs being confined on someone's property, 33% decline in that. Deceased animals are declining by 28%, the amount of, the volume of calls we're responding to. So calls in the field are declining as well. It's a good sign. More of the same, just highlighting some of those statistics, also 17% decline in people calling us to request to patrol their neighborhood as well. What you see right there is a graph that's kind of the same information, but it's broken down by geographic location. What we try to focus on is the targeted areas, some of the most common areas that would contribute to shelter intake. The two, the four largest sort of graphs there are northeast Bakersfield, northwest Bakersfield, southeast Bakersfield, and southwest Bakersfield. And what you'll see is there's a 24% decline in these call types, and from northeast Bakersfield, 29% decline in northwest and southeast Bakersfield, 36% decline in calls in southeast. What you see here, I'm going to move towards spay and neuter real quick, real quick, I'm almost done. So this is spay and neuter vouchers that were redeemed. What's important to take from this is that the majority of, in 2018, the majority of spay and neuter vouchers that were redeemed for use on owned animals are going towards and coming from those targeted areas, northeast Bakersfield, northwest Bakersfield, Oildale, the Oildale area, and east Bakersfield as well. So when we see large amounts of animals coming from a particular area, it's good to see that, that the people in those communities are making use of the spay and neuter dollars that we have. Overall, in 2018, 1,503 spay and neuter vouchers were redeemed for dog sterilization. Of those 1,503, 921, 61% were used in those targeted areas. So we're trying to figure out why we're seeing declines in intake, why we're seeing declines in calls for service. It could be that most of the spay and neuter dollars are going to those targeted areas where we're seeing reductions in overall intake. This is just a quick graph to show you sort of the genesis of the spay and neuter program from 2014, fiscal year 1415, through the not-yet-completed fiscal year of 1819. A good thing to take away from that is that there's been a total of 8,092 spay and neuter vouchers that were given to residents, 8,092 since the inception of the spay and neuter funding. And then alternately, also, there's mobile clinics that we use that funding for. 2,067 surgeries were provided for by mobile clinics, 5,074 trap neuter release, feral cat surgeries that were provided for, a total of 15,233 total surgeries that have been paid for by county funding through the spay and neuter funds since 2014. That graph on the bottom just shows adoption, and I'll get to that in just a second. You'll see that since 2014, the department has affected 23,848 total adoptions. I say adoptions because those are animals that are spayed and neutered and released back into the community. So when you begin to look at, you know, why we're trending in the direction that we're trending in, it could very well be that there's almost 40,000 animals between the amount of animals that are being spayed and neutered and adopted in the community, and the spay and neuter funding that's providing for spay and neuter on those animals, almost 40,000 animals that are being, and entering our community that are sterilized. That's not even including all the work that organizations, like rescue organizations in the community, Curtis Without Litters, all the efforts that the people in the community are doing to spread the word about spay and neuter. So it could very well be that we're finally, finally touching the tip of the iceberg and seeing a decline in calls for service and animals coming in. Again, the same statistics there. 61% of all the spay and neuter vouchers that we've redeemed since the inception of the voucher program have gone into those target areas. So again, we were hopeful that targeting those areas would eventually have that effect. It appears that it's having that effect. We just need to keep our foot on the gas. That just about concludes my presentation. I did want to say one thing, that I was going through some information, just to put this all in perspective. On Saturday, August 14th of 1976, the Bakersfield Californian published a segment written by Ted Fritz, it was titled "On the Fritz." And in that edition of "On the Fritz," Mr. Fritz states, and I quote, "I was informed by the Kern County pound that approximately 24,000 cats and dogs were destroyed in the pound facility each year. Bob Jones, a very adroit reporter with a human feeling, recorded the latest statistics revealing that 26,157 unwanted and injured dogs and cats were destroyed last year." That's 1976. I was six months, six months old when Mr. Fritz wrote that. It just goes to show how long we've been dealing with the problem in Kern County and how difficult of a problem it is to solve. So I appreciate the support that we've gotten from the board, I appreciate the support from the rescue community. We are not where we want to be, but we are certainly headed that way.
When did you, when did we hire you? When did we name you as the Director? Before I go to Supervisor Perez.
Boy, it feels like 1976. I believe it was towards the end of 2014.
Well, I know we've supported you, but I think in large part, the success that you just talked about is due to you, and I want to just acknowledge that and thank you for that, for your leadership on that. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. I am very pleased, Nick, by this presentation, and I do think it's where we want to be, frankly. The numbers, of course, will continue to improve, I think, with your leadership and the remarkable team and compassion that you have for these animals and the community, right? To have a different kind of cultural perspective towards our animals and our duties, and the safety of these animals and our families. So I am just so, so grateful. We did bring you on in 2014, we launched spay and neuter in 2014, and the response from the community was profound. Thousands and thousands of people literally calling in, showing up with their animals. We, as you know, cleared out many dollar stores of their, you know, apparatus for caring for dogs properly, and cats and other animals, but this has been an incredible adventure. And I am so pleased that you've been at the helm, and I know that it's because of your leadership that we're here. And I still remember that newspaper article I sent you, if you recall. It was a picture of you, that James Berger obsessively covered this issue when he was at the Californian and really cared about it for 10 years, and it was a picture of you taking an animal to be euthanized. And the look on your face was really compelling because it was clear, the heartache in your eyes, you could see it, how much that you love this animal, and just how awful this moment is dozens and dozens and dozens of times, over and over. And so I just think it's so cool that it's you at the helm, that you have taken that situation and have put us on the right path. I think it's extraordinary. I'm grateful to you and your team, and I can't wait to see the numbers next year and see how much closer we are to reaching our goal. I think it's honorable, and I'm so impressed, so thank you.
Supervisor Perez, through the chair, and the rest of the board. I appreciate your accolades, but you have to understand that you have probably one of the most dedicated staff in animal services that you could ever see in the county. I mean, these people come in day after day, and they still have to euthanize animals, like the one you saw, the picture of me with, and they're dedicated to the job, and they come in every day in their high-stress environment. And by the way, I'd like to point out that we had our just-one-day adoption event that was part of the no-kill awareness month last Tuesday, and we adopted 111 animals out, dogs and cats in just one day. And the staff came in and worked 12-hour shifts, and it was just, I would love to stand here and take all the credit, but it was really the staff and really the community that's come together to even make us produce the numbers that we're seeing.
Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Nick. Let me see your socks. All right, you're looking good, buddy.
Listen, that was just for you, man.
Okay. Hey, Nick, it's obvious, a great presentation. You obviously are completely in control of your organization, your department, and you are managing things superbly, and I'm very thankful for that. The taxpayers pay you well, and they are getting every dime for it. Thank you very much. My question is this, you have a set, you were on your opening slides, you said you're 75% live outcomes, and you're targeting 90%. So what makes you think you're going to achieve 90%? Are you realigning resources, or are you bringing on people, or are you counting on less intake? What do you think is going to get you to the 90%, and when are you going to get there?
Yeah, that's a complicated question. Supervisor Gleason, through the chair. I will use this analogy, if you can sort of figure all of the animals that come into an animal shelter represented by 10 animals. What I usually say is, those 10 animals, there's usually a four or five that are easily adoptable. They come in, somebody sees it, they adopt it right away. There's another two or three animals that come in, they haven't had a lot of human interaction, but they're overall gentle animals, and with a little effort, we can find them placement. But then there's two or three animals that are difficult to place. They're injured, they're sick, they're aggressive, they need work, they need time, they need effort. That's where we are right now, is trying to find solutions for that, those last two to three animals. And to be honest with you, our gap that we need to make up, that's why I was saying that we've adjusted sort of our understanding and definition of no-kill, is that we're very limited in what we could do as a department. We have to depend on the community to raise their awareness of how well they should treat their animal, and that's what we're trying to get into. So when we talk about adjusting resources, I mean, resources are limited, very, very limited, but we're always trying to think of new programs to address the stuff that we just saw, you know, large breed dogs and underage kittens. But in addition to that, we're trying to figure out how to readjust resources to get out in the community and do some outreach and educate people on why they need to treat their animals a little bit better, why they need to spay and neuter their animals, and the resources that are available to do that. So when you ask what we need to do, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but using, efficient use of resources is probably chief in those things.
Thanks, Nick.
Supervisor Mader.
Thank you. Without belaboring everything that's been said, I can't thank you enough and your staff enough. Two of your people were out at McCray Park on Saturday, just another demonstration of how dedicated that your staff is, so congratulations to them. Do we have a measurement of how many people come to our shelter but leave without having found an animal? Because I'm trying to get a way to juxtapose the, those that leave without an animal against those animals that we have to put down because we're out of space. If we had more space, would those animals indeed be taken, or is there any correlation between those two numbers?
You know, to be honest with you, the animals that are not making it out alive because of time and space, those are those, when I was talking to Supervisor Gleason, Supervisor Maggot through the chair, talking to Supervisor Gleason about is that the animals that we're sort of missing the mark on, they're difficult to place. They don't, what we say, they don't show well in a kennel. Animal shelters are not a good place for a dog or a cat. It's a very stressful environment. They don't show their natural behavior, their natural tendencies in a shelter. So when somebody comes in to adopt a dog, it's not that they're leaving without an animal, it's just they're not choosing that animal. And that's why it's on us to find other methods to market that animal, other methods to put some resources and effort into that animal to make it more sociable. We've integrated playgroups, it'll probably take another 30-minute discussion, but playgroups into what we do, so we socialize the animals so they're a little bit more adoptable. There's a lot of intricate detail in how we can try and get those animals placed, so it's not necessarily people that are coming in and leaving without an animal, it's more about the animals that aren't being seen, they're just not being seen, they're not showing very well. If you ask me if we had more space, absolutely, if we had more space, I could keep animals for a little bit longer and find them placement, but, you know, resources are limited, as I said, and that's not probably a realistic outcome. But we are looking into foster placement for some of those animals, and that's been somewhat successful in the past three weeks.
So do you think there are not very many of our constituents who show up at the shelter and are not ever able to find a dog that, or a cat that is suitable to them?
You know, I don't have statistics on how often that may happen. I'm sure it does. You know, options are limited sometimes, like our just-one-day event. You know, we were open from 9:00 AM till 8:00 PM, and there was just a load of people that came in before 9:00 AM, and, you know, within the first two hours, 60 animals were adopted, so the pickings were slim after that. So, I mean, there's always going to be, you know, a gap between the animals that just aren't being adopted and the people that are coming in to see those animals. You know, like I said, I don't know that there's any particular reason why somebody would come in and not find an animal that they want for adoption, but we also encourage people that, we don't want them to adopt an animal just because they want to adopt an animal. We want them to adopt an animal because they've decided, made the decision to have an animal into their household, they want to treat it like a family member, and they've made a connection and a bond with that animal. So that doesn't always happen when people come in, but I do not have that statistic to show how often that happens.
Thank you again for your great effort and your staff.
You know, we don't normally do this on, because this was under public, or this was under the Resolutions of Proclaimations portion, but because you gave a report, I want to open it up to the public, if there's anyone here that would like to comment on the report, I think that would be appropriate. Seeing none, we don't need a motion to receive and file the report, do we? Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Takes us over to item two, excuse me, item three, which is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people that would like to bring an item before the board that's not on the agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the board. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public presentation this morning? Yes, sir. Now's the time. You notice how I looked your way?
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, my, to the honorable board of our supervisors. My name is Curtis Jaden Bingham, senior treaty advantage to our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, truly His only-begotten Son of a holy, heavenly Father, God Almighty. And the Lord tells us to bless our leaders, and so I would just like to say, when you say the word supervisor, it means the same thing as blessing. And I also like to always say, we had a sickness witness program that didn't have any money. That's one of the greatest things you guys have done, because evil is going on big time, and a shame it got down to that. Thank you for coming to the rescue. And then we had a Christmas last year, would have been a lot of sad kids if you didn't come through on that, too. So we want to thank you for doing that. I also just like to say, when we go to the gas station every single year, you know, we paying $10, $15, $20 more per tank of gas, and they don't ask us and they don't get no permission, and we pay it. So what I'm trying to say is, you have a wise servant, Sheriff Donnie Youngblood, who honestly is a sheriff, but he's also a prince. God made him one, you know? And he came up with the idea of that 1% sale tax. If you had to go to the people 10 times to get it, do it, because once you got it, we got it together. Your lead, your number-one servants don't have enough money. We got an emergency going on right now because of money. We said we can't We said we can't do it here, well, it's the way you can do. I think California City did it three times and got it. Do it, if you get it, it'll put them on top because, you know, without them, we cannot do anything. And so I'm just saying, we need to look at that again because it came up and he's the one came up with it. And it really, really needs to be done because the money needs to be there. You don't worry about the people panning, because like I said, look what they do to us with the gas. We pay it every single year and they got plenty of money, but they still charge us. We pay it because if you do not do it, you worried about what the people gonna say because you asked. Let it get out of control and then watch what the people gonna do. They gonna come trying to blame our supervisors. The Bible tells us there's 420 elders that sit around the throne of God. You guys are an example of that. You guys are highly favored and blessed by the Lord. We come up here as your servant to get our blessings. And the only thing I'm just saying, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, you gotta do something for your servants. They've been shot down, knocked down and everything else. When the sheriff come up, please, as we respect you highly, we got to listen to him because it's very, very important and inside of the Lord to hear him out. He's one of the greatest men I know because he's always asking over and over and over and over for funds for his servants to get out there and help protect us. He don't never stay back. He ain't worried about just getting his salary. He's always here over and over. You can tell he don't get personal. That's why he keep coming back because he want his servants, his workers to get it and to be able to bless us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Wonderful. I appreciate you. I'm gonna go to speed school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public statements today? If you'd like to speak, can we get you to come to the front row so we can get you the microphone quickly? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Couch. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I think I found my answer on the first page, but I presented to Ms. Perez's office an issue with my workers' comp. I'm trying to get this resolved as much, as quickly as possible. I think the answer is that I'm supposed to write to you guys all, asking you to put it on your agenda for it to be discussed. I'm not really sure. I've reached out to County Council and the workers' comp. We're trying to work together, but I'm not getting answers in over a week. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Maggard's office and to Ms. Perez's office for having really good staff that answered my thousands of questions that I have when I come in. So I'm just trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do at this point. The offer that the county is offering is very low and I would just ask that the Board of Supervisors review it to make sure that it's fair. So what do I do?
I'll refer that to County Council.
Chairman Couch, members of the board, my office, both the County Council side as well as the risk management side, has worked with Ms. Escalante, especially in the last two or three months. We've had numerous interactions, phone calls. I know that there has been some difficulty in getting a hold of her. She's dropped off a letter or two. The supervising workers' comp adjuster is assigned to her case to try to shepherd it through. Offers have been made that are within the guidelines that are prescribed by the state workers' compensation system. We have made every effort we can to get her workers' comp matter resolved and without going into confidential medical information. We feel that we are trying to, we are definitely moving in a direction to try to assist her, but there might come a point where her demands and what the law provides just don't mesh exactly. But my, like I said, my office is working with her and I know that there have been a couple of meetings and some phone calls. I would encourage her to continue to work with Iliana Sanchez, who is the supervising workers' comp adjuster, as I said, assigned to handle her case. And she's, Ms. Sanchez is very familiar with it and is available to assist to the extent that we can within the confines of the law.
What's the problem in contacting her?
I believe there have been times where we've left messages that just haven't been returned.
I've responded to Ms. Sanchez on Friday as well as yesterday and I still haven't heard from her. So that's why I came this morning.
I wasn't aware that she had responded as of yesterday.
I'm trying.
But...
Supervisor Perez would like to make a comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Perhaps today would be a good time to head to the County Council's floor, Nadine. I think it would be helpful to just reconnect again. But I do have a procedural question. It sounds like there is not a meeting of the minds and that's not uncommon when two sides are adversarial fundamentally. So it sounds like you don't like the offer. We're making offers that sounds like from our County Council within the parameters of the guidelines. But my question is, if she's not happy with that and we, county believes they're doing what's appropriate per the guidelines, what then is, are the options for Ms. Escalante procedurally? Does it, is it a full stalemate? What can she do to convey her unhappiness with the offer or try to negotiate something different?
Supervisor Perez through the chair. Within the workers' compensation system, there is an ombudsman, so to speak. Not sure of the exact title, but she serves as an ombudsman and she is at the Workers' Compensation Appeals Board office here in Bakersfield. And she is there to assist people who are not represented by council. I think one of the things that caused a delay for a while is that our records indicated that Ms. Escalante was represented by council, which meant we needed to work through the council. Took quite a period of time to get a substitution of council to remove that person. But I would encourage her to work through the Workers' Compensation Appeals Board and the woman who is, who holds that position's name is Cheryl Ortiz and she is at the WCAB and that would be, I think, a terrific place to start that helps people who are improper.
That's extremely helpful. So when folks are not represented by an attorney, either because you've already exhausted your funds to pay them or whatever the reason is, you are on your own in a pretty, I think, intimidating system, there's an ombudsman there that is an advocate for you. Have you been to that place yet?
No, and I really don't wish to go that route. I'd rather just resolve it with the county as quickly as possible. So I'll just reach out, like you said, to Ms. Sanchez.
Okay. And if you're interested in connecting with the ombudsman, my office can help you do that.
Okay, all right.
Ultimately, you want to be heard and have your matter resolved, but if you're not happy with the offer, County Council has got to stick within their guidelines per state law. This area of the law is one of the most rigid. There isn't a lot of room for getting outside the lines. I mean, it's an incredible compromise between the state and employers when we have situations like this that sometimes work very well and then other times are incredibly frustrating like now. So I appreciate your frustration, but those are your two procedural options. Work directly with County Council or if you want to fight it, appeal and get some legal advice, you go through the ombudsman. But that's, the five of us cannot intervene in that process. It would be illegal and unethical. But this is a place for you to come and ask for direction, so I'm glad that you did. But it sounds to me like those are your two options.
No, thank you very much. Thank you for explaining.
Okay, best of luck to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public presentations? Seeing none, item four is board member announcements and reports. Seeing none, we'll go to item, I think it's 22, which is a presentation on the Waste, Hunger, Not Food Kern County Program. Mr. Constantine, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In April of last year, we were in front of your board requesting approval to launch a new program that we called Waste, Hunger, Not Food Kern County. The concept behind the idea was to rescue food that would have otherwise been thrown away and provide it to those in need. Our primary focus were families within areas that did not have healthy food choices, where perhaps a single mother may have to push a stroller to a corner convenience store and end up only purchasing high-sugar processed foods. We launched the program in September of 2018 and over the last nine months, we've been busy. We now have three refrigerated trucks making two trips each day, five days a week, pulling healthy food from schools and restaurants and distributing all of it through a network of churches under the auspices of CityServe, which, as you know, is a local international nonprofit that trains community churches to respond to their neighbors in need. As of last night, this number is updated every day, but as of last night, we've rescued 300,539 pounds of healthy nutritious food. Six van loads of food every day is transported to these small, oftentimes under-recognized churches within our communities. Not only is the food healthy, but our environmental health, with our environmental health strict oversight, we ensure the food is transported and delivered safely. Of particular note is Maria Coward. She is the owner of the La Costa Local Restaurants here. She is a participant in the program. She felt that donating leftover food was not enough. She comes forward and says, "I'm going to make food for the community." So on a routine basis, and you can see it in the corner of the picture, she makes loads of food just for the purpose of donating. I'd also like to publicly thank and recognize Pastor Robin Robinson, who's in the audience now, who you've known with CityServe and really is indispensable for the success of this program. The purpose, though, of this morning's presentation is to announce that the state has awarded Kern County with another grant in the amount of $266,000. This money will allow the county to build a large refrigeration unit on City Serve property that will be managed and jointly operated by the county and City Serve. The grant will also allow the department to purchase a fourth Waste, Hunger vehicle that can be used to transport large pallets of food rescued and also funds an additional driver. These new non-general fund resources will allow us to help many more families. We're really proud of what we've accomplished, but we've just begun. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board before we open it up? Yep, Supervisor Gleason?
Matt, how about East Kern? What are we doing out there?
So we're developing a program. We have slowly extended beyond Bakersfield into the surrounding greater Bakersfield area. Since this was really a pilot program and a proof of concept, this data shows that it's working. So what we need to do is develop relationships with the schools and the outline communities, but more importantly, develop a system of churches that we could also use in those communities. We want to base the programs in those outline communities. We want to minimize travel, collect the food and distribute it in those communities themselves. So we're early on, but that's on the radar and we'll get there.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question about the program or the presentation? I hear someone that might want to ask a question coming back. I thought maybe you were in a hurry to get back because... Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chairman. Matt, this is utterly spectacular. I am just so pleased and so grateful to see the progress in the City Serve partnership, which has been relatively new and it's moving very quickly. I'm really stunned and I'm personally aware of work that they do in my district that is compelling and such a breath of fresh air. Matt, I saw at the Golden State Mall a City Serve sign. Is there, what's happening with that? That's very exciting.
With the board's indulgence, perhaps we could ask Pastor Robin Robinson to come up and tell you a little bit more about City Serve?
Chairman?
Certainly.
Thank you. I was so excited. I saw it within the last 48 hours and I thought, oh, this is real action taking place that really makes a big difference.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. We feel blessed to be part of being the glue in our community to try to bring our local churches back to their mission on mandate.
Amen.
It's across the denominations and it's been a blessing, not only through City Serve but through Waste, Hunger, to see these small churches in neighborhoods regain what their mission is for there. And many, many people in those neighborhoods are unable to have transportation to get to good food, but beyond just the food even, which is such a tremendous blessing of resource, is the opportunity for the local churches to engage in support and help and hope in those neighborhoods for helping them to navigate through different areas of resources that they may need through personal relationship. What we see the difference is, is the churches that are engaged in City Serve, they don't go and drop, they go and stay. So they begin a relationship from the very first drop and that person from that church continues that relationship just as a help. There are no strings attached. It's absolutely to say, what can we do to help you take a step up? And not a hand out, but a hand up. So at the building there, it is, the back of it is all City Serve. It is a warehouse where just over the past year, we've taken in probably over $20,000, $20 million of goods in kind that have been distributed, most of that throughout Kern County here through local churches and meeting needs of people, which is basic needs. So it's a tremendous blessing. Matt, so we're just getting started as well and it's been just a blessing to be connecting the churches to the Waste, Hunger program, which is meeting real needs in our community. In the warehouse in the back, we would love for anybody that has not had a tour of our supervisor, we'd love to take you, let you see what's happening down there and just see the opportunity that's coming into Kern County to truly make a difference, not only just in the Bakersfield city area, but the county, as well as these East Kern and these outline areas. We've been able to partner just with Chairman Couch on some movie nights last, this last Friday night and coming in Lamont in two weeks to be able to be out there, engage the churches as part of when the movie night's over, the church is still there and across the denomination. So beautiful, beautiful picture of partnership and just collaboration and education in the community with laypeople to see how can we make a difference by collaborating with others in the community. So the church is here alive and well and wanting to do our part.
Well, I'm so pleased to see people within the church doing the work of the, that we know as historically connected to the person of Jesus Christ. I think it's extraordinary to watch. It's compelling for me and I'm encouraged by it. Two things, what's the best way to contact you personally?
Personally, I can give you, I'll leave cards here for you personally, so that you guys are able to contact me personally.
Excellent.
Email or phone number.
And here's why I ask. I'd like to partner with you on a major project that we're launching in southeast Bakersfield, which is the MLK area. If you're familiar with Cottonwood MLK, we're doing some changes there and some upgrades there. But in that neighborhood, of course, it's easier to get a bottle of liquor than it is to get fresh veggies. And I think that's, you know, abhorrent, frankly. We're going to be in the upgrade of that park, bringing in farmer's market, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables for the community to select from. And I would just so love to partner with you in the, you know...
Yes, we have some churches in that area, Supervisor Perez, that would love to be part of that and we would love to get on the front lines with you, do whatever we can do.
Fantastic. Please leave your card because we'll be contacting you.
I will do that, absolutely.
Keep up the good work. God bless you.
Thank you.
Don't go away. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. Pastor, could you give us a bit of information about the cost that you're incurring to process these loads and loads and truckloads of goods and that, you know, that it isn't done for free, there's a cost that's incurred? So could you tell us a little bit about what that cost is?
Yes. Thank you again, Supervisor Maggard, for helping us with some of those loads coming into the county. Last time I was here, we could get a truckload, we're getting about 30 to 45 trucks a month coming into Kern County. The ones that we're concerned about, the ones that are staying in Kern County. And so that's probably 10 to 15 to 20 loads a month that are coming and just staying in Kern County. So in the middle of that, it's $1,000 to $1,200 a load, but that truck could have $150,000 to $250,000 worth of product in it to go into our community. So the shipping cost is real. There is a small covenant that we do with the churches, but again, understand that we're going into areas and neighborhoods where the churches, where the broken people are, the churches are broken as well. So they don't have these resources, income, Waste, Hunger, to help us to build that relationship as a free resource in the community. But as well, we know that we can't put a cost. We do not want a transactional thing going on by pallet, by load, by weight with these small churches. They couldn't do it, which is where the need is the greatest. So in engaging small churches and larger churches, in some ways, some of that happens with the churches, but much of that will have to happen with community monies in helping us transport the stuff to get it into Kern County so that we're able to use it in those areas, build relationship with people to see them move from where they are to a better place because of the relationship part of the goods. The goods really don't mean that much unless they're used to build relationship and be able to speak into the lives in a positive way, help them navigate from where they are to where we know that they need to be.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you for that explanation. I asked you to do that. You didn't seek to make that known today, but I ask you to do that because this effort is specifically helping my constituents in the third district. It is specifically helping constituents in all of our districts.
Yes.
And I would urge my colleagues to consider helping the way I have chosen to use some of my district resources to make sure that my constituents continue to be served by this. So, thank you very much. I'd like to brainstorm with you a little bit about getting you on the speaking tour to go to some of the service clubs in town that have foundations and a couple of other foundation ideas that where other parts of the community might come together and help.
I'm open.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to getting together with you.
You brought it up, so I'm gonna, I was gonna do it at a different time and place, but I'll, and I'll do it then, too, but I want to mention that we did have a County Resource Fair, Movie in the Park in Arvin on Friday night, and it was a great event. Lots of people came, they got fed, but your people really made it special, because you had all the games. So, I want to, I want to thank you, but pass along my thanks to all those folks that showed up, because people had a great time, and I don't, they wouldn't have had as good a time, I don't think, if you guys hadn't been there. They would have had a good time, but you guys were really, really helpful.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. We appreciate it. It was a great time for us, and we'll be there in Lamont.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks, you guys.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention the few people that are involved in this program. Michelle Corson is in the audience. She's the one that oversees this Waste Hunger effort. Sitting next to her is Mary Devlin, and then Katie Cornford. They both are helping with the efforts. And then finally, Beth Cluer. Beth is a person of faith and helped, was involved with Lift Ministries, mostly in the Oildale area, made a big impact on providing, helping provide showers and foods. She's one that tried to avoid us for many years, because she felt she was feeding the homeless without a permit. The first time I said her that, I told her that she's probably going to jail, because she broke the law. She's put up with me, and now she works with me, and that's a big testament to the power of those that have been willing to partner with us on this endeavor. So, the four of them make this happen.
Thank you very much. We just needed to hear the presentation. We don't need a motion? Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 23, which is still under Public Health Services, its response to a request from June 4th regarding Kern County's preparedness for typhoid. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on June 4th, you made a referral to Public Health to provide a brief overview of some media reports from Los Angeles regarding typhoid fever and what steps we have taken locally to prevent a similar event. So, although I am unaware of any confirmation from the county of L.A., especially the Public Health Department in L.A., the media has reported that a law enforcement officer in Los Angeles had contracted typhoid fever. Although there were comments made about unsanitary office environments and unfavorable conditions that this person faced in the field, there has been no confirmation about the source of the infection or if, in fact, the disease was confirmed. However, typhoid fever is a bacterial illness that affects about 350 people in the United States each year, but in almost all cases, it is travel-related, meaning the exposure occurred outside of the United States. Salmonella typhi, the pathogen that causes typhoid fever, is passed primarily through food or water contaminated by an infected person. In Kern County, on average, we see about one to two cases per year of travel-related typhoid fever. Common sanitation practices, proper hand washing, all reduce the likelihood of transmission. However, if somebody is traveling outside of the United States and into an area that's endemic for typhoid fever, there are, there's a vaccine available, and it provides additional protection. And finally, typhoid fever is a state reportable disease, meaning all healthcare providers are required by law to quickly report any positive case to Public Health for any person that tests positive for the disease. And as of today, we've not seen any change in the presence of typhoid fever in our community. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Well, that's pretty good news.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for that short report. There's no action that needs to be taken. That was just to hear the presentation. Do we need, is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on that presentation? Seeing none? Thank you for that. That's the end of the agenda. We just need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Certainly.
Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.